We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call to order this meeting of the Monongahia County Commission for September 16th, 2020. All commissioners are present, and we will begin with consent and approval. Good morning, Renata.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have thirty-six exonerations for eighteen thousand two fourteen sixty, vouchers, general county fund, five eighteen, eight eighty-six twelve, poll severance, sixty-three ninety-four, nine-one-one, three thousand nine sixty-three seventy-six, Chestnut Ridge Park, five thousand five ninety-seven forty-five, Camp Muffley, six thousand four eighty-three twenty-eight, Mason Dixon Park, seven fifty-seven thirty-four, transportation levy, seven hundred eighty-four thousand six seventy-six forty-eight, library levy, one ninety-two, six oh one seventy-three, reallocated coal, five thousand dollars, assessors valuation, one thousand eight fourteen fifty-seven, payroll, one thousand, or one million, six thirty, eight forty-eight twelve, Morgantown Industrial Tiff, eighty thousand, one twenty-six ninety-four, purchasing card vouchers, general county fund, forty-one thousand, six oh seven seventeen, poll severance, thirty-four eighty-nine, nine-one-one, nine thousand, six seventy-two twenty-six, home confinement, one sixty-seven fifty-one, Chestnut Ridge Park, one thou- one thousand one fifteen fifty-nine, Camp Muffley, four eighty-seven sixteen, Mason Dixon Park, three ten seventy-nine, assessors valuation, six sixty-four, for a voucher total of three million two hundred eighty-four thousand eight seventy-nine ten. We have budget revisions that require state approval for general fund, for the county commission, county clerk elections, other buildings, senior centers, and capital projects, other buildings. Position vacancies for boards and authorities, the Western Board of Zoning Appeals, Monongahia County Planning Commission, Monongahia Development Authority, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, Bannon and Dilapidated Enforcement Agency, Mason Dixon Park Advisory Board, Region Six Planning and Development Council, Historic Landmarks Commission, and the Mountaineer Trail Network Authority. Fiduciary orders for September 16th, 2020.
Move to approve consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded for approval, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
You also have a hearing for administrative closing of estates today.
Okay, thank you.
So a list has been presented to you from the clerk's office. It's in the fiduciary folder.
Okay. Okay. Introductions of new employees.
No, you have to do that.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Sorry.
Where's the folder, Renata?
It's, it's, he's got the folder.
Oh, a physical folder.
Yes.
A physical folder, yes.
Okay.
So this is for the, this is for the estate of Nellie Pugh?
No, this is, uh...
The administrative close order.
Yes, correct.
Okay. So what we have, is there, well, I guess first of all, is there anyone here with respect to any of these?
Yes, yes.
So we'll begin the public hearing then. Please come forward and identify yourself.
I'm Joseph Scotty. I'm the executor for Rita Marie Pugh. I don't have any objection with the closing. I just want to make sure everything was, was clear and above board, so I thought I'd show up. She was a pretty impoverished person with a serious mental illness, so she had no real estate. All the possessions she had went to her family. This is ten years ago now. I was sure I had done the paperwork, so there's really no objection. I just wanted to make a statement on that.
All right. And it's good to see you again.
Yeah, how are you? Didn't recognize you half covered.
I understand.
I'm sorry, what was the last name on the estate?
Pugh, P-U-G-H, Rita Marie Pugh.
Oh, okay.
She passed in 2010.
I mean, if you don't have any objections, then...
I have no objection. I just wanted to...
Okay, great. We appreciate that. We appreciate you coming and verifying.
Okay, thank you. And so I need to do nothing else.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other objections?
Are there any other objections? Hearing none. We can go ahead, I think, and close this public hearing.
Okay.
I would take a motion.
I move that we approve the order as presented by the county clerk for administrative closings of these estates.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming. Is he still here?
No, he has, Dr. Scotty has left. But thank you. Okay, now, moving on to introductions of new employees and personnel changes. We do have one, M.J. Zink, executive director of the Monongahia County Youth Services Center, has hired Julie Henrich as a relief work part-time.
Move to approve?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded for approval, all in favor.
Aye.
Are there any other introductions of new employees? Hearing none, we will move to comments from the public. Is anybody here wishing to speak on comments from the public? Seeing none, we will close comments from the public. And we do have two proclamations. First of all, Constitution Week, 2020.
My name is Vicki Shears. I'm with the Elizabeth Ludington Haggins, Colonel John Evans, chapter of DAR. And then we have a representative from the Woodburn chapter as well.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Good morning. Whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the two-hundred-and-thirty-third anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities, and whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week, now for, now therefore we, the members of the Monongahia County Commission, by virtue of the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves, adopted this sixteenth day of September, two thousand and twenty.
Move that we approve the resolution?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded for approval, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. And next, a certified arts community.
Good morning.
Good morning.
May I remove this to speak or no?
Yes.
Yes, thanks. Hi, thanks for having us. You want me to read it?
Well, tell everybody who you are.
Hi, I'm Beth Keener Blainery, the executive director of Arts Mon. Go for it.
Please do.
Okay, this is you all's forte. I...
You're the arts.
But it's your proclamation.
It is our proclamation, so this is for becoming a certified arts community in two-thousand and twenty, whereas the arts and humanities embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind, and whereas the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of every citizen, and whereas the arts and humanities play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, and in the broadest scope, our country, and whereas Monongahia County recognizes the importance of the arts to economic development, educational quality, and civic involvement, and whereas Arts Monongahela, doing business as the Arts Council of Greater Morgantown, enhances the arts, and becoming a certified arts community is further evidence of the growth and vitality of the creative community throughout Monongahia County. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Monongahia County Commission, do hereby call our citizens to celebrate and promote the arts and culture in our town and country, county, to specifically encourage the greater participation by those said citizens in taking action for the arts and humanities to better enrich the lives of all who participate, adopted this day, sixteenth day of September, two thousand and twenty.
Move that we approve the resolution?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded for approval, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay.
I have a little bit more that I'd like to ask. If I'm correct, I think we just saw and we approved that the city of Morgantown also requested...
Correct.
The same.
Yes.
Knowing the government in Charleston, and I looked up the actual goals under the city of Morgantown, it says, "Objective two, promote collaboration with and engage the Mon County Commission to work on issues that are agreeable." I would make the recommendation, I'm a little concerned if you send two in, that there may be concerns. Could we recommend to the city of Morgantown that we combine the two...
That's what we're doing.
...with one cover page?
Yep.
And that would be it, but I would like to make that motion that...
Sure.
...we would combine the two so they're both connected.
Yes.
If that's all right with you.
Second.
Okay, just, and it just makes more sense, and then I think it's something the city and county can show we're working together.
Well, we already are working together.
Well, but I was afraid if they looked at it...
On this particular initiative, yeah, and that is exactly what our plans are.
Oh, okay, great.
That was exactly what we discussed, that we would do this collective.
Since there is a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's why I wanted to make sure.
No, 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 appreciate y'all very much. Thanks for supporting us.
Well, thank you for doing this.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I was a little concerned this, I didn't want the state to separate them.
And next, Talene Kuhn with Grants.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I have two requests for reimbursement. The first one is for the governor's highway safety program, and it's the save communities in the amount of one thousand thirty dollars and fifty-three cents. And the next one is also the governor's highway safety program, click at our ticket, in the amount of one thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars and seventy-three cents. So I have those, and then I also have two grant applications. The first one is for the governor's highway safety program. They haven't, what they've been doing is they've been telling us how much we will be receiving. They haven't informed us of that yet, but they want us to get in our application. So I have for you to sign the conditions and assurances for that and the special conditions, and then I also have a resolution which reads, "The Monongahia County Commission met on Wednesday, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, with a quorum present and passed the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Monongahia County Commission hereby authorizes the Honorable Edward A. Hawkins, President of the Monongahia County Commission, to act on its behalf to enter into a contractual agreement with the West Virginia Division of Motor Vehicles to apply, receive, and administer grant funds pursuant to the provisions of the West Virginia Governor's Highway Safety Program." Here's that one. And then we also have another grant. It's for the Day Report Center. It's the West Virginia statewide implementation enhancement and evaluation projects. They are requesting eighty-two thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars, and this is to provide psychiatric evaluation, medical assessments, and medically assisted treatment in a timely manner to better treat substance abuse disorders and co-occurring mental health issues. So you have to sign the application, the standard conditions and assurances, the federal standard conditions and assurances, certifications regarding lobbying, and then the equal opportunity, equal employment opportunity plan requirements.
Move to approve the president signing the grant documents as presented.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
I guess I know what I'll be doing for the next half hour after the meeting. Correspondence.
None.
Commissioners, do you have any correspondence?
No.
Is there any unfinished business?
Yes, sir.
Seeing none, we'll move to new business. First is consideration to approve the following items as presented by Carrie Blaney, county clerk, regarding the two thousand and twenty general election, poll worker appointments, voting precincts, and early voting locations. Carrie?
Hi, good morning. I'm just gonna sit on all this stuff down here. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
First, we have for your approval, the polling locations for the upcoming November third general election. We had one polling location change from the primary, which was precinct seventy-one at Westover. We typically use the Westover Community Building, but they have rented that, and so we were able to secure the Westover Veterans of Foreign Wars post nine-nine-one-six. It's handicap accessible, provides plenty of access. So we are recommending that location change, and we have letters prepared that will go out to those residents today, pending your approval of those. Do you want to wait and just do one blanket?
I move that we go ahead and approve the poll, I'm sorry, the precinct locations as presented by the clerk.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded for approval, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. And approval of the poll workers. The Republican and Democratic Executive Committees submitted their lists to our office by Friday, November, September the eleventh, and our office has worked since then to fill some vacancies, and we are proud to say we have a hundred and fifty-two poll workers currently on the list. That changes, it changes daily.
Daily.
But we do have a hundred and fifty-two poll workers. We are certainly looking for additional poll workers, and would be happy to use, if there are any other people interested, be happy to use them. We are also recommending the rates of pay be fifty dollars for attending the training. There is a two-hour training involved, and two hundred and five dollars for working on Election Day. That represents, it's a fifty-five dollar increase for the poll workers, but it, there's a seventeen-hour commitment from a poll worker to work. This puts them at fifteen dollars an hour, and it keeps us in line with what other counties are paying. I've also been working with the Secretary of State's office to try to secure some funding. They've been able to, to reach out to some people in the private sector who was interested in trying to help some of the counties with these costs. A lot of counties are struggling trying to find poll workers. We've been very fortunate here that we've got a lot of people who are willing to still come out, and so I ask for you to approve those poll workers and those rates of pay for the November election.
Move to approve the poll worker appointments and rates of pay as presented by the county clerk.
Second. Been properly moved and seconded for approval, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
And our early voting locations. We will have four early voting locations for the general. We had five in the primary, but Westover was one of the ones that we used, and so in light of the change there, we're recommending the four polling locations. Same locations, Mason Dixon Park, Mountaineer Mall, of course, is our largest one, WVU Alumni Center is another popular one, and Fort Pier Pont will be in the same unit...
Oh, good.
...at Fort Pier Pont that we were in the primary. It's located to the right of Planet Fitness when you go into the Fort Pier Pont development there, and I want to thank the B of fours. They graciously let us use one of those units, so we really appreciate that. But those would be the four early voting locations. Early voting begins October the twenty-first and runs through October the thirty-first, and we will run from nine a.m. until five p.m. at all four of those locations.
Move to approve the early voting locations as presented?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded for approval, all in favor.
Aye.
Those are the only approvals that I needed from you today, but I did want to update you on the status of some other things going on with the election. So absentee ballots is underway. Any voter in the county who wishes to vote by a paper absentee ballot by mail can request one, and ballots begin to be mailed on Friday of this week. So this has been a pretty busy week for our office. We are scheduled to mail out on Friday over five thousand ballots that have already been requested. I did turn the application into a return mailer kind of a document that was inserted in the newspaper today, and will also be in the post extra sometime between tomorrow and Saturday. So it will hit about thirty-five thousand households across, just in Monongahia County, and that will help those voters who may not have access to a printer. What we're finding out that many voters have access to a cell phone or to a computer, but very few have access to a printer or a scanner at home to be able to print it out, scan it, and return it by an electronic means. So this should help those, those voters get that. They can also, as always, call our office. We'll be happy to mail them one that they can return, or they can come in person. We're fortunate that our courthouse is still open. Many are not, but we're fortunate that we are. When a voter does request an absentee ballot, we are encouraging them to return it by mail. I know that there's been a lot of discussion in the media about the postal situation across the country, but I can reassure our voters in this county. We are very fortunate here. We have a relationship with our local post office, and our ballots are handled specifically for this county, so that if you are living in this county and your ballot is being, staying in this county, your ballot never does leave this county. The only ballots going into the postal mail that will be leaving this county are ballots that are going to another state or outside of our two-six-five zip code. So I can, I want to make sure that our voters are comfortable in knowing that they will not have a problem using the postal system locally here in this county. We also are looking at partnering with the assessor's office on some of their satellite locations. I understand normally the assessor is not doing satellite locations as far into the fall, but I heard that he was anticipating doing that, and so I'm looking at partnering with the assessor's office to maybe have some of our deputy clerks at those locations that would be able to accept the ballot back from the voter, so that if they did had, had applied for an absentee ballot, and we're mailing it on Friday, and we're at one of those satellite locations, they could bring their ballot back to us and we could take it from them at that time. So we are looking at, at those kind of aspects. Drop boxes are another big question that we get asked about. West Virginia, the law does not permit, permit a drop box to be used because the law indicates that it has to be hand-delivered to the clerk. And so that's why if we have a deputy clerk at a location, maybe partnering with the assessor's office, and you hand-deliver it to us, that's complying with the law. But just dropping it into a box with no one in attendance at that box is not permitted under West Virginia law. Are there any other questions, or are you all receiving questions from voters that maybe I can help answer for you?
I appreciate the one, the one big question has been about drop-off box. And I'm really glad the way you're doing it, and I mean, the way the law is. I have concerns about that, but I really appreciate you getting that information out. That's the number one question everyone's asking.
Okay, you have concerns about what?
I didn't have concerns, they had concerns, are you gonna have a drop-off box?
Oh.
And we don't, and I appreciate you publicly saying that so the people understand.
Yeah.
You are not going to have a drop-off box.
No, we, in the primary, if you remember, we were shut down.
Right.
Our courthouse was closed to the general public, and so we had a cardboard box at the front door of the courthouse, so that a person who wished to bring it in person could open the door, drop it in that box, and then our office would walk, would come up and get the ballots out of that box.
Okay.
But that was only in the case because the commission had closed the courthouse to the public. Under normal circumstances, the law is very clear about that.
Yes.
And we will do everything in our power to try to get those ballots from our voters within the confines of the law and what the law allows us to do, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's all I had.
Thank you.
We know a lot of hard work goes into what you do, but please don't ever think that it's not appreciated.
Oh, I know that. Thank you, sir.
Next is a consideration of requisition number forty-five for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
The requisition is for three hundred and seventy-nine thousand six hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-five cents, and these are for, these are for, this is for sales tax collected in the month of July.
Move to approve requisition forty-five as presented?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded for approval, all in favor.
Aye. And one thing to note on that is, that is, of course, with the hundred, hundred thousand dollar statutory lien, less the hundred thousand dollar statutory lien and three thousand eight thirty-three fifty-three of administrative fees, so.
And next, do you want to go ahead and get Mr. Turner on the phone? I'll read and then we'll explain. To consider adoption of a preliminary resolution regarding the setting of a public hearing, date and time at which hearing, the Monongahia County Commission will consider a proposed amendment to project plan number one, the amended project plan...
Welcome.
...of the tax increment financing district known and designated as the County Commission of Monongahia County Redevelopment District Number One, Star City, and approving the form of public hearing notice to be published in connection with the same. We are having Mr. Jason Turner participating by phone in lieu of Tom Amen today for any explanation. Jason?
Hey.
How you doing?
Everyone, always nice to hear your voices. Sorry I can't be there in person.
That's okay.
All right.
As, as I believe Commissioner Hawkins was mentioning before I came on the line, this is a preliminary resolution with respect to the Star City Tiff District. As you all know, the, the commission established the Star City Tiff District in two thousand and seven, is actually the first district that the, the County Commission did. Star City, the entire district is within the corporate limits of the town of Star City. The, the town cannot do a Tiff District because it's a class four municipality, and so they requested the assistance of the County Commission in establishing the district, and then Star City serves as the developer of the district. Just a little background there. In two thousand and twelve, the commission issued some Tiff bonds that were privately placed with United Bank, and then the town used the proceeds of those bonds to fund various parts of the project, including road and intersection improvements, utilities, public infrastructure, and among those uses was the purchase of property along Boyers Avenue to facilitate the widening of that road and some related public improvements in that area. So if you've driven along that road recently, generally across the street from the Beth Western there on Boyers Avenue. At the time, the county and the town didn't have any intention of trying to sell that property that had been purchased. It was just purchased to allow them to, you know, to widen that section of the road. But now the town does have interest in at least marketing the property and would, has requested the, the County Commission's assistance to do so. So the bond documents from the two thousand and twelve bonds required that in the event that the county and town wanted to sell that property, they would need to first amend the existing project plan to explicitly provide that the town had the power to do that. So that's what this amended application is for, that, that you all will be considering after the public hearing. I will note that under the application and the bond documents, any sale of the property or any future property acquired in a similar way under the project plan would be subject to the agreement of the County Commission and the town as to the purchaser, the proposed use of the property, and the sale price. Additionally, under the bond documents, any proceeds of the sale would then be applied to paying on the bonds, and in the event that, you know, the bonds were paid off, any, any other proceeds would be transferred to the Tiff Fund for purposes of the project. So that's sort of a federal tax issue, and that's the reason it was structured that way. So what you all are considering today is just the, the first procedural step in the process towards this amended application being approved, and so you're, you're, one, setting a public hearing date, which I believe is planned for November fourth. You're approving the publication of a notice of public hearing for that public hearing date, and then approving the providing of the notice and a copy of the application to the development office and to the local living bodies, and that would be the, the town, obviously, and the Board of Education. Then after the public hearing on the fourth, that's when you would actually approve the amendment to the plan and authorize that to be submitted to the, the development office for consideration. Any other questions about the process or about the application?
No. Do you want to move?
No.
I move that we approve the public hearing... I move that we approve the public hearing date of November 4th to 2020 at 10:00 a.m. We'll just do three separate questions.
Motion for approval of that hearing date. All in favor?
Aye.
I also move that we approve the publication of this proposed amendment.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded for publication. All in favor?
Aye.
And the third thing is, we need to -- I move that we provide the notice as mentioned by council, as appropriately required, to the other living -- tax-living entities.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Jason, does that cover the three motions that we need, or the three steps that we needed to take?
Those are the steps that are set forth in the resolution, so I think that would cover everything that you do to go ahead and approve the resolution and have President Hawkins sign that.
I move that we approve the resolution for the President to sign.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason, for your --
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other new business? Hearing none, we will move to reports from elected officials. Carrie?
So you came back.
Yes, I did. I was remiss in my previous comments of talking about some upcoming calendar dates of interest for you all. As you know, this Friday, we're going to start mailing our absentee ballots. That's September the 18th, so we have over 5,000 going out. We'll be doing poll worker training the first week, the first, second, and third week of October, and October 13th is the last day for any voter that wishes to register to vote, to be able to vote in the upcoming election, or to make any changes or updates to their address. They can do all of that online if they wish, using the online voter registration system if they have a West Virginia driver's license, even one that's expired. We'll still work on the online voter registration system, or they can contact our office, and we'll be happy to help them with the process of those updates. October 21st to the 31st, of course, is early voting. October 14th is the day that we'll be doing our public testing, so that's an important date for you all. That will be 2:00 at the Election Center at Mountaineer Mall.
14th.
Yeah, the 14th, and I'll give you these here.
Okay.
October 14th, that's a Wednesday, at 2:00. And the last day to apply for an absentee ballot is October the 28th, and November 3rd, of course, is the Tuesday general election. November 9th will be the Monday following the general election, where we will begin canvas at the Election Center at Mountaineer Mall, and that would begin at 9:00 a.m.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other reports from elected officials? Hearing none, we'll move go to reports from county commissioners. Tom?
Okay. First, I just received this. I think you all just got this. With great sadness, we just got a text that Rich Wood, our former planner, passed away, either late last night or this morning, but we just got that text. And I'll just ask now for a moment of silence for Rich. Thank you very much. Second, the team court board has been meeting. We are looking at our goals. We're looking at our finances and looking at future board members, so we will still be meeting, and we will get back to you with any new changes. And finally, you will hear from each of the commissioners. For any person who believes that we're a part-time job after this past year, let alone this past week, it's been unbelievable. I do want to thank my fellow commissioners. When there's an emergency or a phone call, we have been meeting early morning, late at night, trying to deal with this virus situation. I will state that yesterday, in general, we did have a meeting, which the group will be meeting tomorrow at 11:00 o'clock, to just discuss some new issues, and then there was a meeting that Sean Sikora was involved with the governor's staff. And it's very rare I say this, so I want to make sure I publicly state this, that I personally want to thank the governor for allowing us to have input and express our views before he makes his decision today. We do not know what his decision will be, but we did have input. We did also invite him to tomorrow's meeting or his staff, so I believe that letter did have some input. I thank my county commissioners for allowing me to send that, and I'm just glad there is now a lot more open communication. And all I ask is that let's be part of the solution, and let's see what happens, and I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Sean?
Thank you, Tom. Since the last meeting, last Thursday, was my -- I had a red team, Development Authority, and then at night I went to an event with J.B. McCuskey. It's always great to have -- get to talk to J.B. He came to town for an event, and he actually asked me to introduce him at his campaign function, so I thought that was pretty cool. But people need to know that the special relationship we have with the auditor and how open and active he is with us. I mean, I regularly -- we talk to each other at least three, four times a week regularly. He bounces stuff off me, I bounce stuff off him, so it's nice having somebody else in Charleston. It's very, very reactive and very available to talk through things. Friday, we had staff reports. Monday, I had an aquatics -- we had a special JUMA subcommittee meeting. As you all know, the JUMA is the Joint Use Management Agreement Committee that actually manages the Aquatic Center, and we had some discussion about financing and dealing with the whole COVID crisis. And then we did have one of our -- the governor had his conference on Monday, and he specifically talked a lot about Mon County, so we had a county official's call that afternoon to discuss what it means and where do we go. And by county officials, we had everybody, a representative from across the county. We had the county commission, representative from the city of Morgantown, representative from the Board of Education, representative from WVU, and of course, our own Health Department, and the president of the Board of Health of the Mon County Health Department. So it was a very productive call. Same group has been meeting the last couple of weeks to kind of dive deeper into the numbers and try to make sense of where we're at here in Mon County. So really appreciate these guys being able to be available on such short notice. Yesterday, we had another county official's call, and then as Tom mentioned, at night, I had a call with Clay Marsh, Sarah Tucker. She's the higher ed -- I don't know her exact title, but she's the head of that whole board, did governs all higher education in the state of West Virginia. Dr. Campbell from the Board of Health, and Rob Alsop from West Virginia University, and Dr. Smith from our Health Department. And I'll be updating our group tomorrow in regards to that conversation, but it was a very positive conversation. Today's a regular day. This afternoon, we have a light work session.
We have zero work sessions today.
Well, it's light because the city scheduled me. I'm participating in the city's homeless group committee, and they scheduled it for 2:30, so generally, that's -- I do not accept any appointments on Wednesday, but since this is the first one, I will be participating in that. And then 4:00 this afternoon, we have the Morgantown Area Partnership, so things are fairly busy. Tomorrow's a very busy day. I have Mylan Park Executive Committee meeting at 7:30. At 8:30, I have the Harmony Grove Interchange discussion with the Morgantown Industrial Park officials, and then after that, we actually have a call with Senator Capito to talk about that project. And then 11:00, we have a work session with all the county officials. Friday, we have staff reports. I want to thank you guys for coming in with your resolution. The Constitution Week is very important that people actually get to know their Constitution and understand, and understand certain basic civics like what we're doing here, so thank you. I appreciate it. And the arts community, thank you for all your efforts. And that's -- I'm just going to kind of keep it at that.
Again, the curse of speaking last. I would like to reiterate that the relationship that we have with the state auditor, it was not just Commissioner Sikora, but Commissioner Bloom and Commissioner Hawkins were all present to speak with J.B. McCuskey. We do feel that the events that have transpired since he has been elected relative to Montegalia County, the checkbook and everything else, have been remarkable. Tomorrow is the League of Women Voters Forum. This will be held virtually on Zoom, that I believe is for county commissioners and I believe another group, yes. Monday, we will have a meeting at the 4H and Extension Center, basically revolving around the kitchen. And I'll make this statement, and then I have one other thing to say, and we'll conclude. Community leadership of our commission, of the Board of Education, of the city of Morgantown, WVU, and our Board of Health have been meeting in executive sessions the past two weeks, looking at assembled data relative to COVID spread. Tomorrow, we shall meet briefly in executive session at 11:00 a.m., and then there will be given explanations of all the assembled data to the public, so that everybody understands. Saturday, it was my pleasure to participate in a parade to celebrate a special birthday for Benjamin Foster Nash, and I would like to wish happy birthday, happy 13th birthday to Ben Nash. Thank you.
Move to adjourn?
Can I make one announcement?
Oh. Sure, go ahead.
You may.
This is an announcement. Because I -- my apologies, I should have done this at the proclamation, but we are getting together, our DIR groups, on the courthouse tomorrow to ring bells.
That's what I wanted to know.
At 4:00.
4:00.
So please join us if you're available. We will keep our numbers. Our numbers are never usually very high anyway, so we won't, I think, exceed the 25 numbers.
That's okay. It's outside.
It's outside.
Tomorrow at 4:00.
Tomorrow at 4:00 is the celebration of the signing.
With social distancing, you may exceed 25, okay? You're out in the open. That being said?
May I ask for move to adjourn now?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.